Our Merricore from last year, she came back for a second year. We're really grateful to her for coming back. It's really nice to have somebody come in, ask support staff that already knows how the school functions and knows the students and what's going on. So it's great to have her back. And we have Bridget Reynolds, who was our Math and Science teacher last year, has moved into a halftime position funded by the Alaska Heritage Institute. She's teaching traditional ecological knowledge science classes. She'll teach two science classes this year. And during the rest of her time, she'll be mentoring other staff in further embedding culturally responsive education within their classrooms and across school culture. So we're really looking forward to seeing how, you know, she, how that position kind of plays out in our school as well. Yep. So one of our favorite days during orientation is our stewardship day. We have a Pacific High School stewardship day that we do every year. There's a lot of harvesting to do in the garden when students get back. In fact, in the summertime, usually around August, we're like, man, we gotta get this stuff out of the ground, but we wanna wait for kids to get back. We did have one student that worked in the garden all summer. She earned some elective credit for that. But these are some pictures of our students that are harvesting our garlic. We harvested 88 pence of garlic on that day, 25 pence of elephant garlic, which is big, robust, yet mild kind of garlic. So that was fun. Students harvested and cored and processed 16 and a half pounds of apples on that day. And they also harvested a bunch of lettuce and carrots and peas that we used for school lunch the next day. So it's always nice to see that farm-to-table, come to the table and have students participate in that. And so just looking forward to upping that as we get that greenhouse finished, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We did have a young passerby, young Arlo, some of you may recognize him, but he had stopped by to pick a carrot, so we wanted to include. It's one of our young and up-and-coming gardeners. This is a picture of our greenhouse a couple of weeks ago. I would say this project is teaching me a lot about the construction process. It's teaching me an incredible amount of patience having to do with construction and timelines. And my goodness, is this thing becoming massive. But it's so exciting to think about in the small garden space, behind-the-seat building, you know, thinking about the kids harvesting over 100 heads of garlic out of that small space and then thinking about the possibility of what we can produce inside of this greenhouse. The process is going slow. The rainy weather in the summer contributed to some of that. I'd say the largest limiting factor is just, you know, these greenhouses are usually put up by staff from the company who are trained in how to put these up. We got the kit with a small one-inch binder of instructions that we're learning. It's pretty incomplete for someone who isn't on staff. However, we have some volunteer carpenters, one of whom has built these greenhouses down south and has experience with it. And so I'm really grateful that we have them onboard because there's been some adjustments that need to be made, lots of conversations and FaceTiming with the company. Some of the parts haven't been there, so they've been needed to be manufactured on-site. And so just quite a few hiccups, but you know, I'm assured by those who do this work that this is all part of the process. We're seeing progress and, you know, I feel like I've come back to you all a few times and said, well, have it done by spring. I'm excited for summer and it will be done. And I'm really hopeful it's finished over this fall. So hopefully the next time that I come back to you, not next month, but you know, maybe in two, three at the latest, probably DC myself, we'll be able to say that we are getting ready to start growing some things in there. We have soil ready. It's really just getting the framing and the trusses figured out. And then after that, it's, you know, putting the polycarbonate siding on, which again, I've been assured goes much more quickly than really the framework and that type of thing. So lots of good progress. You know, just really grateful to the folks who've been helping us out get that put up. And students are definitely excited to get out there and start building some beds and growing some food. So I think that's all I have if there are any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ashley Messler. Hello, everybody. Kind of echoing Jill's, this is our first day this year was fantastic and very smoothly. We have all the sixth graders in for a PDS orientation day and then the seventh graders come in the morning for the first half of the day and the eighth graders come for the second half of the day, kind of team building, fun stuff. But it's a lot of moving parts with three different grade levels coming and going, some in the building, some out of the building, buses picking up and all that stuff. And we didn't lose anybody and they'll be well, I'm sure some kids, two kids in there, but they were playing frisbee and running together. It was a fantastic start and the school year has just taken off from there. Another highlight I have is, and you just met them, is Ashley Messler and Sidney Carter. Actually, she teaches seventh grade social studies. And we hired Sidney as our school counselor, which is a pivotal position in middle school, like two weeks ago, when school wasn't session. We had that position open for a while and I was kind of sweating bullets, like, are we gonna have a school counselor? Because if you don't have a school counselor, you're really missing the entropy. So we were very fortunate to pick her up. We also have Kelly Buxton, who is not a new teacher, but she is now doing our STEAM classes over there and she's been just great. She's jumped right in, gotten the STEAM classroom up and going. And so I'm really thankful that we have her as well. I also, like Casey, wanted to give a shout-out to the Elks. I don't know if people know, but each year they donate a lot of stuff to every school. We receive literally a vanload of snacks and school supplies, everything from reindeer to pencils to binders from them. It's something they do every year and for a lot of our students that come to school and if they get their laid or for how to make those snacks, they're pretty clutch for them and they really appreciate that. And a lot of our students will see them. We know which jackets at the school are from the Elks, who nice jackets, but I see a lot of those jackets on a lot of our kids around town. And without having a rain jacket or rain pants in Sitka, those kids would be fairly miserable. So I really appreciate their efforts. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
You're welcome.
So we had a wonderful start to the school year this year at Sitka High and we decided to do it a little differently. So we did, in the morning, we did freshman orientation. We did a barbecue lunch for all students in the middle of the day, free of charge. And Chef Joe was pivotal and just stepped up to play big time for us for that. And then in the afternoon, we had some fun. So we had an all-school assembly and so you see the kids are having lots of fun. The staff worked hard and we did a lot of games. So we did the hoop-hoop race where you locked arms and did all sorts of set of rock, paper, scissors, who was?
Eagle, wolf, bear.
Yeah. It was a lot of fun. But at one point, the entire student body was on the gym floor, back-to-back, playing these games. So just an engaging way to get the school year started again. Some team-building activities. We did a scavenger hunt with the freshmen. They learned about the Halat scene and the foundations of what we're trying to teach through that program. National Honor Society, met with freshmen to teach them how to be successful in high school, activity fair. And oh yeah, the staff had fun too. Even Mr. Hauser, you see Mr. Hauser there with wolf out front. The staff, we joined in in the games and just really tried to make it a fun back-to-school atmosphere. I will say it's the best first day of school I've had. And this is my 29th year in education and then we won't say how many years I went to school myself, but lots. And this was absolutely the best. And then to cap it off, we got the whole school out front and got Mr. McArthur at the drone out. And so that's a photo of all of us there in front of the school. And then we formed the letters S H S and took that photo. So just a nice way to start the year. You know, we did sprinkle in some things like handing out computers and getting them logged in and updated in the system and that, but just a nice welcoming back into the school year. Seen a lot of faces for the first time and not just freshmen because, you know, we've been behind masks for so long. It was just really nice to see smiles on kids' faces. We're back to business as usual. There's no rest for the weary, so we've got volleyball in full swing and swimming and cross-country and we actually, so that day was on Tuesday. Volleyball's traveling Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, first week of school. So we've already got kids out on trips and doing all sorts of fun things and competing. And we've done our math testing. We got math done last week. We got language usage done this week. We're getting reading completed and just getting in the groove of the school year, but things are off to a great start. Any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you, Sandra. It's great to hear.
Thank you.
All right, with the completion of the school highlights, thank you to all the principals for giving a wonderful report this evening for each of your schools. We appreciate hearing about the students. We're going to move on to item number 10, board member awards. I'm going to start out with Mr. Moore. Do you have a board?
I don't have a whole lot to report on. Somewhere over the last couple of months, I've just been spending a lot of time familiarizing myself with those things I should be familiar with. Spending a lot of time with the school board policies and then in the last few weeks, just getting a better understanding of the budget, you know, looking at our other documents. I also just found a really, really helpful document on school financing or on school budgets. It's put out by the Legislative Finance Committee called the Citizens' Guide to K-12 Funding in Alaska, just a really nice resource, only like 14 pages, some nice information on just how, how schools or budgets are created, you know, things like the cap, et cetera. So really helpful. Let's see, besides that, as I talked about previously, I'm volunteering at Pacific High to co-teach a government class there. We're calling it U.S. Tribal Government in Context. And so really it looks at local, state, federal government, but through the lens of tribal government. And I'm co-teaching that with Matt Rowan and it's just been really enjoyable. We had our first class yesterday. That's Monday through Thursday and it was just really fun to be in the classroom, to be at Pacific High and to disengage with students today. I got to sit in on the hall school meeting and that was great, seeing, you know, students and staff handing out kudos, being on the hot seat and being grilled by students. But just really enjoyed, you know, the perspective of students. We've already had some really great discussions and just, you know, hearing their take on local government, on government, on the school district. It's, I think, just really great to hear directly from students. And just a couple of last little things, just some of the reports brought this up for me. I just wanted to highlight for the public, those who aren't aware, the SCA Social Services Department have been working with the Stellar Group for the last year and they put out, it just recently released a needs assessment on childcare in Sitka. Really great document that's now available. You know, one of the key findings there, at max capacity, Sitka has 396 childcare spots, but currently they're at 194. So we're at about 50% capacity for childcare as a community, you know, as Annette said, not nearly enough for the need that's out there. So I'd encourage people to take a look at that. It's got some findings and some recommendations. And then also just another plug for the Boys Running Two Club scene program. SAFE I know is still looking for coaches for that program. I had an opportunity to volunteer as a coach several years back. Great program, you know, just teaches some great skills for the kids there and some fun activities running around. So I would encourage folks to reach out to SAFE if they're interested in volunteering there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guebler.
Nice one, Nick. What all the principals have been saying, it's starting to be a good year. All the teachers I've been talking to are just really, really enthused and about the school year out. It's been a smooth start and everyone's just really excited about going. So just want to kudos to all the teachers and principals, administrators, staff with that. Other than that, I'm excited about the ASP Fall Boardman's Academy in Fairbanks coming up next weekend, right? Is that you? Excited about that? Interesting. Other than that, just happy to be part of it.
Thank you. Mr. View?
Yeah, I'd choose to sort of work this time around, touch base with people with Jill a little bit, because she's a liaison with Bearinoff. And then personally, my kids, I got to meet some of the new staff through small orientation. That was nice. Liked to welcome everybody, especially Ashley. I rented Ashley at the grocery store and she did such a great job as an Merricore at the high school over a couple few years ago and she had left. Right anywhere at the grocery store, I was like, what are you doing? And she said, I'm not getting working. So I'm really glad to see her back. She came up to Hickers with a couple of the students for the youth leadership conference a few years back when we went up for an ASP conference. So we got to, got to know her, a couple of students. They were great. Let's see. Yeah, I think that about covers it. I'm just glad to hear that we got to speed and there was a little bit of touch and go with getting housing for some of the new teachers and it sounded like that was, the community sort of stepped up and helped out there too. So hopefully some of that thing can help solve the mentors and staffing issues and get all of our wheels on the tracks. So thanks everybody for paying attention.
Thank you, Paul. I didn't mean this. My apologies. Sometimes I don't know my own strength. Thank you for your reports. I'm just going to finish up. Just personally, it's just great to hear about the schools and personally get my own children in our school buildings as well. They have reported every day about how excited they are about attending. A big change in our family is that my son is home for the school year and he is happy to be a part of Pacific High. And I'm happy that he is part of the Sitka School District family right now. And moving forward, I know he has a lot of great things ahead of him because the staff there. We completed his interview and we were just reassured how amazing everyone at Pacific High has been. I have yet to visit my school, Sitka High, but I plan on doing so because I am always so proud about hearing about the upcoming sporting events and volleyball taking place. And Sandra, you and I really do have to catch up in person. I did attend a dinner this past month with Ocean Conservancy. They're a nonprofit. They spent the day cleaning up some beaches and they partner a lot with the Sican Sound Science Center and they have some ideas about how to partner with the Sitka School District. And so it's fun to and interesting to hear their ideas. Of course, I represented myself and not the school district, but it was great perspective to learn about their work and their mission. And I would like to echo what Mr. Guebler said about the upcoming Boardmanship Academy that's going to happen in Fairbanks. I grew up in Fairbanks. I'm so thankful it's not during the real winter, so that's why it happens. It gets a lot warmer than Fairbanks. So that's the close of my, my report. So let's move on to our administrative reports. So I'll hand it off to Mr. Hauser.
Thank you so much. I have a few reports to provide and then we'll get to my PowerPoint in just a second. But just wanted to take a moment to highlight the budget report here for you. Always like at the beginning of the year, just to highlight a couple of points and if there's questions, we can go and I can answer some questions for you. But one question that usually comes up when looking at the expense report that is on the budget report is when you look at like percentage available for some of the funding that's there. And for example, if you were to look at like support services on 350, you'll see that 52.56% is available. And it's just always like to remind everyone, as you're going through and looking at some of those numbers and you see some of those that you're thinking, well, wait a second, early September, we're going to use December center. It's always important to just remind everyone, that's including money that has been incurred already that we're projecting using for the whole year. Another perfect example is if you were to look down for remaining operations, you know, a large percentage of that money that is reflected in being used or has been incurred, for example, is used for janitorial services. And so always like to just highlight a couple of those as far as the budget goes, where, you know, everything's looking good as far as the money coming in. And just wanted to make sure that I remind everyone as we're looking at that, you know, not the expense report, why sometimes you'll look at some of those percentages and the money that's, or the percentages of available funding that's there and why that looks like it's a little bit low, but the realities are there are some costs early on for supplies and materials and technology and janitorial that will kind of hit early in the year. And that's why you see some of those numbers. The other thing I wanted to kind of give a quick highlight on is the enrollment update. And the last time I spoke, I believe we were about 1,120. We're right about close to where we wanted to be for the enrollment numbers as of today. This is this morning, we're sitting at 1,111. So we are a little bit shy of what our enrollment number in projection was. Again, that final count will take place in October, 5th of October, but at this point we are about 14 students behind our projected count for the budget. But even today, we picked up another student and so, you know, staying optimistic as students are coming in. But as a reminder, when we get to the student count by the end of October, at that point, that is when the number is established for, you know, the funding for the district. And so at that point, once we get it in November and we pass October, that number is locked in and that becomes our, the number of students for which the foundation formula is based. I also wanted to include under the enrollment, at the last board meeting, there was a question about free and reduced lunch. And so the business office put together just some information about free and reduced lunch. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight, just kind of the breakdown, the chart indicates which schools currently have a percentage of free and reduced lunch. Students are there and as you can see that breakdown, the different schools and number of students that are, or the percentage of students that are free and reduced lunch. One pointed note that's highlighted in the memo does state that approximately 8% of the students that are represented are eligible under the grace period, which ends on October 5th. And so there's an overlap to allow students a chance to get their, you know, paperwork filled out and families a chance to get the paperwork filled out, work with the district to get, you know, their free and reduced lunch status back in place prior to just the start of the school year and their students going to school not being able to afford or have access to lunch. And so that's where there's that grace period there. We do and are continuing to communicate with families, if you, through media, social media, in schools, announcements and to individual parents, emails, we send them in an effort to, you know, provide them the information about the free and reduced lunch program, how to fill out the paperwork and make sure they understand, you know, just kind of everything that they need to have that's available to them. So just wanted to make sure that I reported back about those numbers that we currently have right now and will be continuing to work on, you know, updating those numbers as we continue through, through the year and through October. Moving on, any questions about any of those? All right, moving to the superintendent's report. So I have my Spide Show ready for you, so we'll go and queue that up. And as was mentioned a few times, I got a chance, and this is honestly the tough part of my job, is getting a chance to go to the schools and just seeing all the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. And I got a chance to go by all the schools multiple times, you know, as we've been getting started. And one of the things I got a chance to do was stop by and read in Mr., oh geez, now I've drawn a blank on his name. Sorry, I'm on break, but I saw it like Kikushi Neeen. And yeah, Burros, thank you. I kept on saying, I want to say Brower, so Burros, Mr. Burros classroom. And one of the students there was very nice enough to actually draw a picture, actually go back a couple. So I just wanted to highlight the first one. There it is, a little more. So Madison, a student in Mr. Burros' class, threw me a picture and it was really nice for her to do that. And I always like to, you know, keep student artwork. I have a lot of student artwork up at my office. I think that is one of the greatest things and the best gifts I get as a superintendent. I received as a principal is just the artwork and the stuff that students have made for me and I really appreciated that. I just wanted to highlight that and show you the picture of me. Obviously, I'm reading a book, so I have my glasses on, so that's why my glasses are there. And, you know, a couple of the things that we saw, I wanted to highlight, the start of the school year and really that first day of school. So we really have, and I'm gonna echo everything that's been said, it has been a fantastic beginning and start of the school year. We've had a lot of excitement, a lot of engagement, positive energies from parents, students and staff from around the district. It's just been great to be a part of that. And I just really want to thank all the staff and the students and the families and of course the school board for supporting us and being, you know, working with us as we get students back to the school year. If you're wondering how excited staff were to welcome students back, of course, you will have to look at this picture of Principal Von Vic and her excitement for being there. This was probably one of my favorite pictures of all time. I texted, I'm like, can I use this picture for this? And she was very nice enough to say yes, so I really appreciated that. So, but it's just been great. And of course, staff from Bearinoff, all the schools have just been fantastic in just kind of being there for the students. All grade levels are getting right into their school routines. I got a chance to attend all of the open houses as well. It was great seeing students that much in middle school, learning how to do the combo. I remember when I was a middle school assistant principal and the thing that stressed students out more than anything else at middle school was the combination for the locker. And so it was great working and seeing the students, you know, figuring out that combo and how to do it for the first day of school so they weren't stressed that first day of school. And then of course, being a part of, you know, just welcoming students back, candy governors back at Bearinoff was just, I mean, you can't, those moments are just priceless. And of course, I wanted to take a moment to thank Trudy and the dedicated bus drivers at Island Bus Company for getting all of our students safely to school. They have had some delays and, you know, I did kind of let everyone know some delays and challenges due to road construction on Solmo Creek. But the construction company, CCON, has been really great working with us to try to minimize the impact and really, really thank them for that. Obviously, it's gonna go a little bit longer, but we just ask for patience as we go through and continue to work through that. But I just want to take this moment to recognize the buses and our bus drivers and Trudy and Island Bus Company for what they're doing to get our students to school safely, so thank you. We've also been receiving a lot of positive feedback on Canvas, which is of course our new academic portal for students. It releases a district-wide software application that provides information on class news, schedules, assignments, activities, grades and other resources for families and students. One of the other big things that Canvas provides is the ability for families to be able to communicate with teachers through Canvas, which has been really a great tool to have one point where families can log in, be an observer on their students' classes and their Canvas classes and be able to communicate directly with the teachers and ask questions. And students can do that as well. So we're really excited about that and we've had some really great feedback. In case you didn't know, Canvas is provided free from the State of Alaska Department of Education Early Development, but our teachers are actually able to customize, customize all their Canvas pages to make them unique, like you saw in that last slide. There was one teacher that actually put that together and she really, I'll highlight, I'm actually in the process of putting together, I'm thinking about having a competition and highlighting some of the best Canvas design classes. I'm doing something every month. So a little sneak peek at what's coming for our staff and some of the just creative work that they're doing with the Canvas pages to make them more engaging and interactive. So I really want to thank them for just taking Canvas on and doing a great job, you know, getting it started at the beginning of the school year. You can also access Canvas from the Canvas app for iPhone and Android operating systems. And of course, that's available on the respective stores. I also want to take a moment to celebrate and recognize Cindy Duncan in our district office, who has really put together some excellent houchie videos for parents that walked them through how to set up a parent account. walk them through how to set up a parent account and how to use Canvas and how to set it up on a mobile app. She has just done an amazing job. And we are just lucky to have her and to work with her. And if you want to check out those videos and you haven't seen them yet, if you go to our website, right in the center, one of the buttons, it just says Canvas. So it'll take you to the Canvas main launch page for families with those videos, quick links. But the quick links are listed and highlighted there. Those are the ones you're gonna want to go to and review to have access of how to log in as an observer, how to get your student's code and make sure that you're able to, um, you know, connect in and see and observe your students' progress and communicate directly with your teachers. And so really, I think it's a great thing because really in the Sika School Districts, we know about the importance of parenting guardian involvement in students' education. And I really do believe Canvas is another tool to support that vital partnership between families and schools and students' learning. And it fulfills an action plan item that we have on our strategic planning that took place and we're really excited to be able to have that available for families and really engage them and bring them in even more to district's learning and appreciate them. So really want to encourage everyone to go to our Canvas page, log in and, um, you know, download Canvas. And if there's any questions about how it works, you know, watch the videos. If you have questions after that, you can reach out to the schools, but I don't think you will. Matter of fact, probably one of the best things I heard was a comment from one of the board members who said that the videos were amazing. And so thank you for that. I appreciate that. We also have, as Principal Lundbeck said, extracurricular activities are up and running. Uh, there, these are just some pictures of last year's sessions. So just wanted to show you some of the fun that we had last year. And we are continuing to offer sports and activities throughout the school year. Right now and kind of historically, we've had approximately sixty-three percent of our Sika School District students participate in some extracurricular activity that takes place after school. And I really just want to take this opportunity to encourage students to sign up for something, even something new this year and join in some of the fun that extracurricular activities and sports provide. I've told the story before and I'll continue to tell it, but if it wasn't for swimming for me in high school, I would be in a different place. I, I really do credit swimming with turning my life around when I was in high school. And it's just something that is become a lifelong, you know, activity for me. And I think it's just great to have the opportunity and while we have these opportunities available for students in school, I always encourage students to, you know, participate and try something new and get out there and look at participating in sports and activity. We've just got some great opportunities out there and I just want as many students as possible to take advantage of that. SSD has successfully submitted, um, our application for the EPA Electric Bus Rebate Program. I know I talked about that at the last meeting and you as a board supported that. The application, application submitted a total of nine buses for a rebate. Uh, the application will be reviewed in September and districts will be notified in October if the application, if, if the application was accepted. We will continue to be excited about the opportunity, but also realize that it might not happen this year because SSD is not considered a quote unquote priority district for the program. But, you know, this at least gets us started and we have all the paperwork in place. So if for some reason we are not selected this year, we always have future years that we can try for the rebate program. Finally, I'd just like to mention that we have a new feature on our website this year, our news feed. So if you see on the main page, at the very bottom, you'll see school feed and news announcements and events. And you can access that just by clicking on the bottom and, um, you can have that information. And when you click on that, what you're gonna see is a kind of link of, you know, all the different, you know, um, recent articles, news articles about the Sika School District that are there. Of course, last week, we get a couple of news articles that highlighted some of the stuff that's happening around the district. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Sika Sentinel for allowing us to link to their article and providing that for our website users. And so I just want to take a moment to thank them for that. And with that, uh, just a couple of last minute things. We do have extracurricular activities, like you said, are starting. So please, students, participate, engage, or if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask questions about the extracurricular activities. The Sika School District's parent guardian volunteers and love our parent guardian volunteers and so encourage them to come to the schools and help out in the classroom, on the playground. Call your school for more information, schedule a time to come in. And just a reminder, there's no school for students on September thirtieth, which is an in-service day. And that concludes my report. If there's any questions.
Are there any questions for Superintendent Hauser? I would like to say that, um, my daughter, Teslin, noticed that, always notices when you visit the schools, she reported that you look exactly like the character in Big Hero Six. I think his name's Alistair Craig. And so whenever you visit and she comes home and I asked her how her day was, Alistair Craig visits the big girl school.
All right, I'm gonna have to watch Big Hero Six. I think it's on Disney Plus, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch that and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that my, my movie screenshot. Perfect, thank you.
She's not wrong, so. Moving on, um, thank you very, um, very much for your report, Superintendent Hauser. You touched on, um, some really great, um, happenings that are going on within the school district. I'm excited to hear about the, um, school bus application and, um, we will patiently wait to hear the word. Even if we aren't selected, I'm, I'm extremely proud that we submitted, um, the application and with good process. Moving on to item number twelve, new business, twelve A. Could I get a motion to approve this item? Stacy Golden, Ariel Starbuck, planned a trip. Spanish and Spanish to Costa Rica with students over spring break March seventh through the eighteenth. Twenty twenty-three students will miss three instructional days prior to spring break.
I moved approved Mrs. Golden, the Starbucks planned study trip with students to Costa Rica over spring break.
So, so.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in a second. Stacy, Ms. Golden and Ms. Starbuck, please talk about your trip.
Hi, I'm Ariel Starbuck.
And I'm Stacy Golden.
And we are planning a trip together. The first time I've traveled with high school students since, I think my last trip was two thousand eighteen, but then I took a break and then, and then now I'm bringing it back. I was in Costa Rica, you guys all read this, I've been Costa Rica with high school kids four or five times, uh, seven total. And we have been talking about getting a trip together for a while and this came up and it seemed like a natural fit for marine biology and Spanish travel together. We have a lot of crossover too. Any questions?
Do you have chaperones?
You have to wait till they're in high school and then they're coming.
Just in case you guys have a bit of a backup plan in case, could we, let's think of.
Well, oddly enough, um, the last trip she had planned, she canceled right before that spring break.
The day of.
The day of. Like I remember we were sitting there, so luckily, um, you were able to figure out how to like cancel a trip in two days and go in there.
Yeah.
Sad to say.
You have a backup plan.
I may president deals. Just wanted to comment, I thought, you know, I'm familiar with, uh, the trips Ariel's done in the past for, for Spanish, but I thought it was really neat that you did the marine biology and Spanish and this opportunity for that crossover learning and, you know, just a lot of cool learning I'm sure the students will get. So, uh, yeah, I just thought that was really neat.
Personally, I'm a big advocate for children seeing the world, so I feel that this is a great opportunity. I was very, um, fortunate to have a mother who traveled a lot. In reading about this trip, um, will it be open to all of your students?
It will be open to Spanish for me and marine biology for her, which was a total of twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-four.
Twenty-five students, yeah.
And, um, are parents encouraged to chaperone or help chaperone?
It kind of depends on numbers, to be brutally honest. Um, so, so yes, she's taken her and chaperones in the past, um, but some of the things that we look at lining up for, especially with a bigger number, like she has someone she's worked with, um, like for a band who always takes, um, the group and is safe and just making sure that we have space. Now that we're combining two classes a little bit, it might just cut down a little bit on the spacing for the extra parents, but, um, but otherwise it's efficient.
Well, thank you very much for, um, planning this trip. It sounds exciting. So moving along on the agenda, let's vote so we can see if this trip is approved. Mr. Keppler.
What's yours?
Oh, I always forget this. My apologies. Is there any public comment on this matter? There's big thumbs up in the crowd. Thank you, Mr. Vios, for keeping me on my toes, keeping me within the realms of Robert's rules. So let's move on to voting. Mr. Keppler.
Yes.
Mr. Vio.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gavon.
Yes.
I say yes as well. It's been moved back in the past on favor. Party director.
Thank you.
Great. And lots of, I will let you know, I'm already working with Ocean Conservancy for my marine cleanup video, so we're already on it.
Awesome. That's great to hear. They sound like a great group.
Yeah, they are.
Thank you very much for your report this evening, Ms. Golden and Ms. Starbuck. Moving on to twelve B, which Crouppa, board approval for planned out-of-state travel with students.
I moved approved Mr. Crouppa's planned out-of-state travel with students to Idaho for basketball tournament in December.
It's been moved in a second. A couple of times. Ms. Lundbeck.
So I ended up sending Mr. Crouppa to Hickers tonight. He is actually participating in the strategic planning for ASOP. So I'll be filling in, but this is an opportunity that, um, our varsity girls and boys basketball teams to go to Kendrick, Idaho. And it's a team that, teams that have visited us several times. So they're just reciprocating and trying to make an experience for the, um, students and teams down there similar to what, um, they've been given here. So even as much as, uh, a jet boat tour and things like that while they're down in Idaho, they won't miss any classes, it's all over once you break, so it's a good opportunity.
Reading up on this, it really does sound like a great opportunity. But, um, is there any board comment or question on this trip? Is there any public comment? Seeing, um, it's been moved in a second. Let's move on to a vote. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gavon.
Yeah.
Mr. Vio.
Yes.
Mr. Keppler.
Yes.
And I hope yes as well. So it's been passed. I'm very excited for the taking. And when you see Mr. Crouppa, please tell him, "Thank you." Moving on to committee assignments. As the public knows, as we all know, we're fortunate to have Mr. Moore and Mr. Gavon joining us on the Sika School Board and with the open seats. With the seats filled that they hold, we do have open committee seats that were filled previously by President Morrison and President Haynes. Now that they've moved on, um, we need to reassign, um, the open seating, the open seats within the committees that they were a part of. So let us. I really, as a president, I really want to, um, hear your thoughts on the matter, both from both of you, the seats are a policy committee and the activities committee with Mr. Moore's, um, involvement within the community on activities. I felt that maybe you would be some claim to be a part of the activities committee, but I also didn't want to overstep and just assume, so.
That works.
And it sounds great. And policy committee, um, hearing about your dedication and reading up on, um, our school district, our budget and our policies. Mr. Gavon, I feel that it would be a good fit that you take, um, the previous seat of, um, Mr. Haynes and join the policy committee with that.
I would very much enjoy that. I'm one of those weird people who enjoys policy, I guess.
So am I. So, you know, you join a good crowd of people. With that being said, um, there is a policy, upcoming policy committee meeting in September fourteenth in the district office boardroom. So it will be good to meet up with you and all of our policy committee members who dedicate